I'd like to call to order the Pasco -- and that was at Seth's direction. I just wanted to know. Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission 10:00 AM meeting of November 12th, 2025. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for the invocation and the pledge.
Honorable Commission, Pasco County Chaplain Anthony Scheit, here to give the invocation. Heavenly Father, we do thank you today for this community, and as we enter our season of Thanksgiving, we ask that you'll continue to bless this community, protect our police, fire, teachers, first responders, doctors and nurses, and our schoolchildren. Empower us today to do our civic business, and we thank you for blessing. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can we please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. District One, Commissioner Oakley?
Here.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman?
Present.
District Four, Commissioner Yeager?
Here.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano?
Here.
District Three, Chairman Stark?
Here. Okay, so now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the board and on other business under the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person, and then we will take public comment from those who are pre-registered for Webex Link and are currently on cue. We request that when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or a team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated, and a green light will be shown on the podium. After two minutes, a yellow light will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, a red light will be displayed, three beeps will sound, and you should close your comments. Webex participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. And do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have several. Tom Frain, Vetmar, please come forward. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Tom Frain, I'm the Treasurer of Vetmar Corporation, Vetmar Acres Club Incorporated.
Do we need an address?
I think we're good with the Vetmar Acres. Your home address, please.
Home address 5709 Apache Street, Zephyr Hills.
Thank you.
I do have a handout here that I would like to have all the commissioners to have a copy of.
Okay, we had a motion to receive and file in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Thank you. You can hand it to someone over there, and they'll pass it out.
Go ahead, sir. Your time's running.
Oh, it started. Okay. We've been here before. I represent Vetmar Acres. Like I said, we're a 1,670-unit mobile home community in Zephyr Hills. And we have an issue with the property taxes being charged to us by Pasco County. Okay? We have since we were here last time, we have engaged an attorney. I'm here with the attorney's blessing because he said we want to resolve this at the lowest level that we can, and that is with you, with the Board of Commissioners. Okay? Now, in the packet, you'll see several things we already had, got information from the county on -- that reflects on our case with the county. You know, number one was the case of the city of Gainesville versus the DOT. That self-explanatory in there, what they're called user fees, because you're charging us a user fee. Okay? Number three in there is an important one, because number three is your -- the board adopted Resolution 70 -- or, excuse me, 0778. Okay? And giving notice of intent to utilize the uniform method of collection and place utility fees on the tax as a non-ad valorem special assessment. That's basically what the law is saying. If you go to page or number five, item number five in there, Jordan Wolfgram says that the law doesn't apply to Pasco County because they call them user fees. Okay? And if you go to number seven in there, you'll see that an ad valorem tax or non-ad valorem assessment, including a tax or assessment imposed by the county, municipality, special district, or water management district, may not be assessed separately against common element utilized exclusively for the benefit of owners in that sub-development. That's what we're saying that the county is in violation of. Their regulation, which places it on the property tax bill, is a non-ad valorem special assessment. And as such, the law says you can't charge it to us. You are due your utility fees. And what we're saying is they're due by all the members in our community is who you are supposed to assess, not us. Okay? Vetmar Acres is the owner of all the common element within the park. And so you're billing us for stormwater and sewer.
Thank you very much. But we don't engage during public comment, but have you met with your commissioner? Who? Is that Commissioner Oakley?
Yeah, we don't.
Okay.
Yeah, and Ron was instructed by your county attorney not to talk to me anymore, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, sometimes that happens when there's lawyers involved. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I'll read this more later.
Scott Waxmith. Your address for the record.
Scott Waxmith, 36919 Terra Ave. I am the current Vice President of Vetmar Acres Club, Inc. I'm here to echo what Mr. Frain has said. Pasco County Florida Code of Ordinance, Section 110-369, billing and payments and penalties. The board held a duly noticed public hearing on December 19th, 2006, and adopted Resolution Number 0778, giving notice of its intent to utilize the uniform method of collection and to place the utility fee on the tax bill as a non-ad valorem assessment pursuant to Florida Statute 197.3632. When you go to that statute, 197.3632, the title is "The Uniform Method for Levy Collection and Enforcement of Non-Ad Valorem Assessments." This particular section of the statute does not mention utility fees or user fees at all. It has to do with non-ad valorem assessments. Under the definition of levy, levy means the imposition of a non-ad valorem assessment stated in terms of rates against the appropriately located property by a governmental body authorized by law to impose non-ad valorem assessments. When you scroll down to the non-ad valorem assessment, it says, "Non-ad valorem assessment" means only those assessments which are based -- which are not based upon millage and which can be a lien against the homestead as permitted in Section 4, Article 10 of the state constitution. And then when you go to Florida Statute 193.0235, it's titled "Ad Valorem Taxes and Non-Ad Valorem Assessments Against Subdivision Property." And it says that they are to be prorated by the property appraiser and included in the assessments of all the lots within the subdivision. Now, Vetmar is very big. There's -- it was multi-phase. There's 18 subdivisions, which is over 1,650 homes. We understand that the county has to collect a certain amount of money to run. We're not saying that the county isn't due these money. They're owed these monies and are supposed to be able to collect these monies. What we're saying is, is the lot owners are supposed to be charged for this, not the corporation as a whole. That's what it says in 193.0235. Thank you for your time.
John Hannan. John Hannan. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, John Hannan, address is 3542 Lanier Road. I'm here on the subject of -- our road is marked private, not county-maintained or county-owned. And we've been having issues of people flying up and down the road, putting our grand -- my grandkids in danger and other kids on that road in danger. And we had a conflict with someone that was speeding, and I asked her to stop, slow down, and she got really verbal and everything and up and said, "I want to call the cops," and all that. And cops come out. There's like five cruisers. I don't know, you know, what she told them, if I had a gun or whatever, but they was out there in like five minutes, five cruisers was out there. And it's just ridiculous that we have to put up with this, and we have to dish out thousands of dollars every year to maintain our road and smooth it out and everything. And Chancy and Morris Bridge being closed so long right now is really put like, you know, 60 or 70% more traffic on our road. And they just don't care. They're just flying up and down our road. And when Pasco County cops come out there, they say, "Oh, well, it's marked, you know, a private road, but we can't do nothing about it." And I said, "Why not?" I mean, you know, you got plenty of places that we volunteer for you to come down there and sit and try to catch these speeders and everything, and you all don't even show up. You don't even come out and do anything about it. So it's just getting to a real danger point, and we got a section of it that is so narrow, fire and rescue can't even get down it with their fire trucks and stuff. It's just a little bit wider than a regular vehicle. And that's another concern, too. You know, people living in that narrow part of it, how they're going to get an ambulance if somebody has a heart attack or place catch on fire or something? Their place is going to burn down before, you know, they get enough hose stretched out to reach in them place that they can't get down through. So it's just a really dangerous situation in more than one place, and I think it needs to be at least county-maintained and fix the issues. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Just one question. Is that a paved road or an unpaved road?
Half of it's paved and half of it's not.
And did you mention what the name of the road is?
Lanier.
Lanier.
L-A-A-N-I-E-R. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert first.
If it's not too much to ask, we're here to say goodbye to Mr. Murphy, and he's not here right now. He's going to be here in a couple of minutes. Can I be shifted to the end of the list?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be okay.
We have -- is this the whole list here?
We -- Alan Lane.
Do we have anyone on line two? 100%.
Good evening. My name is Alan Lane, 3640 Lanier Road. I own nine different addresses on that road, and we got like five other people here to just complaining about the same thing Mr. Hannan was just talking about. We get the people. It's not just because Morris Bridge is closed. The people have been doing it for a long time, and that just more hinders to the situation. They get up there. They have no respect. We ask them to slow down. They holler out the window, "F you," and then they just punch it, and then they go sideways and everything else going down the road. We get out there. We have a confrontation with them, just like Mr. Hannan said the other day. I had one a few weeks ago, and I called the cops. It took them two hours to get there. He called the -- well, the lady called the cops. It took them about five minutes. I had five of them coming in. There were sirens coming in. And the cops told us right there directly that we have no right to tell anybody they can't come down that road. That it's a public throughfare. It's not a public road. It's private road. If it's public, then take your county out there and make them do something with it. If it's private, that's fine. I'll take care of it. I've been maintaining it since '89. I've been through all the Desert Storm and all that stuff back in the past, go out there to fight for what everybody else wants here. Now I'm just here to try to fight for what I got in my own possession, that I paid for in my own business. You know, there's no need for nobody to come out there, and then the cops tell us right in front of the people, "There's nothing you can do about it, and you need to leave these people alone." You know, a man told us the other day, "We got people shooting at one another downtown, and we ain't got time to come out here and play with your road." That's that word he told us. If he ain't got time, he don't need to be on the force, for one. And if you got people shooting downtown, you're going to wind up having people shooting down there on Lanier Road before long, because we've already had massive road rage, massive road rage. And I included myself, chased this idiot all the way down through Zephyr Hills. And if I could have got up with him, it would have been more problems. All we're asking is if it's county, take care of it. If it's private, instruct your officers to when they ever get called out there, to do something about it. I had the man come out there one time. I told him, I said, "If you'll just come out there and sit and watch, you'll see what's going on." They did. Three days later, they came out there. They sat right in the middle of the road. I went out there right in front of my house. I says, "We got a problem?" And he says, "No. You wanted us to come out here and sit and see what's going on? Here we are." I said, "Well, duh. There ain't nobody going to speed right past a them SUVs from Pasco County. They're going to slow down just like anybody else would." But somebody needs to educate the officers and let them know that, you know, we do this on our own. I'm paid for it. These people pay for it. I get out there and bust my butt trying to make it happen and keep it right. And it's not fair for somebody to just come out there and boom.
Thank you. Norman Klein.
My name is Norman Klein, and I reside at 3946 Lanier Road, Zephyr Hills. Because the intersection of Morris Bridge and Chancy Road are closed because of a sinkhole, people are driving on Lanier Road, that's the road I'm living on, to get from Chancy Road to 54 or from 54 to Chancy Road. Lanier Road is paved from State Road 54 South for about a quarter mile, and then it turns into one-lane highway, dirt road. And then after another quarter mile, it turns into a two-lane, but it's still a dirt road. Driving conditions on this road are do not -- are not good for speed and worse for safety. Now, this road is not maintained by the county, so it's private. So you imagine what the conditions are like. You need to drive it to see how dangerous it is. A safe speed would be about 10 miles per hour, but who's going to drive that this day? There are no speed limit signs because this county will not put speed limit signs in, and the sheriff's deputies will not enforce it without the signs. So we're at a mercy of those who drive it, and most of them are driving 30 or 40 miles an hour on that dirty road. The sheriff's department won't enforce anything, but they'll come out there and tell us if we can block it and then give us a hard time. And yet, they'll chastise the owners, but the car drivers, they say, "You're welcome to use it." Now, I don't think that's private. So people are using this road that are in the four -- one-lane section. People are walking it. Horses are driving -- using it. Schoolchildren are walking on this area, and they have to face four-wheelers, dirt bikes, automobiles. What a disaster. So I'm asking you to somehow block it or do something for us, because someone's going to get killed in this road. I trust your judgment on this one, and thank you.
I'm going to take a little privilege here. County Administrator, when we approved Two Rivers, these were all the communities that were to the north. And we said there needed to be connectivity, and I'm not seeing it. And I'm not even sure this -- I think you need to look at this road and see if we connect to it and take over this road. Otherwise, we're going to have traffic jams on all the other roads. It seems we should have as many connections as possible. And I see that Two Rivers is connecting, is supposed -- I can't tell if it's connected or if it's a spite strip. But that was 100% what we agreed to when we did Two Rivers, that it would -- those kids up north could have an easy route to get south, and just want to make sure that's happening.
Yes, ma'am. Connectivity is important. Jason Mickle from Public Works is here. He'll speak with the residents. I think there's probably multiple paths forward and multiple options to deal with this, and so we'll get those out and report back.
Is that our sink -- is that our sinkhole on Morris Bridge?
Well, Morris Bridge and Chancy.
Because it also goes into the church.
Are our area of responsibility, and I know that we do have some construction there. I'm not sure what the detour routes are. I have a lot of questions to staff.
Okay. Well, we'll look into this more later.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Just want to tell you that that road is supposedly coming forward and be finished at Chancy and Morris Bridge.
Morris Bridge?
Is the third week of December is where it's planned to be.
Okay. Well, that's good news for these guys.
But they're working toward that. It's just a time element. Takes a long time to get some things done, so.
But we need to make sure that the conditions that when we approved Two Rivers are being met by their layout and connectivity, and I'm not really seeing it.
Greg Dawson.
Good morning. I'm Greg Dawson. I live at 34920 Appaloosa Trail, at the corner of Appaloosa Trail and Lanier. I have just over 660 feet adjacent to Appaloosa and just over 1,000 feet adjacent to Lanier Road that you've already heard about. Since the intersection at Chancy and Morris Bridge has been closed, traffic has been -- and these roads has been excessive. I have two driveways on Appaloosa and one on Lanier. Various apps were routing traffic through my west driveway on Appaloosa and out the exit on Lanier, even after posting private property no trespassing signs. This endangers my wife, myself, and my six kids that are still at home. My preference is that the county maintain the road, that we be given permission to either install gates or make it a dead end along Lanier. In 2018, we received letters asking for intent to donate portions along both roads as a right-of-way. I'd ask that you look at this as an option again, now that situations have changed and ownership of land has changed. When Lanier Preserves on Chancy Road was built, the county authorized utilities. We run down the middle of Lanier. Again, that is a dirt road, but didn't maintain the road. On June 15th of 2023, my son ran my vehicle into a pipe that was in the middle of the road and bent the frame of the vehicle, effectively totaling the vehicle. On August 22nd, 2023, I filed a claim to the county for $6,584.89. I received a letter denying the claim because the county claimed they don't own the land. We need clarity, either that they maintain the road as a county or give us property owners to block it as necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes those that have signed up in advance, unless there is another sheet up there, so.
What? Finally, have anyone come up? Come on up, sir. Is JJ here yet? Has JJ arrived?
I'm on page two here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Doug Drose, 10144 Dusty Hill Loop. I was here last month about the traffic on Centennial Road when schools are beginning or letting out. Their traffic is getting worse. It's not getting any better. I've sent videos. People just stop on the road for a half an hour and sit there while they wait for their kids to get out of school. I've seen people all the way down Centennial on the Newsome, people driving on people's front lawns on Newsome to make a turn to get back in line. They have no respect for anybody that lives in that area. They block Dusty Hill at times. Fire engines and ambulances are stuck in the traffic because it's only a two-lane road. A simple solution would be to pave Newsome and Townsend, so we would have a smooth exit from our community, even though we have to go two, three miles out of our way. I also found out that possibly the fire department on Centennial does not use Newsome because it is so rough, which I used to live on 98, meant three miles longer route to get to my old community, six to eight minutes. That's just ridiculous as a safety issue. A person could die being six minutes away for an ambulance. You know, I think the county needs to work more, maybe work with the school district and come up with a plan. I'm not sure what the right thing is. I was directed to go to a school board meeting because you guys don't work hand in hand with each other. I see your expression, so I don't know.
We work well with them.
Pardon?
We work well with the school district.
Okay. So, okay, whatever. I mean, I just would like some solution that we could drive out of our road in Dusty Hill and get to 301 without having to be aggravated every day, because we don't know what time this is. This morning, we left at 9:30. They were backed up all the way down Centennial. So we're not sure which school gets in at what time and what doesn't. There are loops in the school parking lots. Utilize the loops better. Have double lanes in, another lane out. There's a third lane for a bus. Get somebody out there that really understands.
County Administrator, who was our representative on the school safety meetings? And perhaps I could bring this up for the next meeting.
They're out of the infrastructure group. I assume Panos is here, be someone from his department, but we can.
Okay, because I'm looking at the map. They should be able to stack on their property.
I'll reach out to the superintendent and see.
Okay. We'll look at it.
Thank you.
That concludes all that have signed up in advance. We have one online.
Okay.
Okay, none further inside online. Julia Bartunik?
Yeah, hi. Good morning. My name is Julia Bartunik. I live at 2645 Meadowland Tribe and Department Chief, Florida, 34655. And I'm calling about an item on the agenda, some agenda related to the $700,000 of the tree mitigation fund to be used on the irrigation and medium planting, which is wonderful to keep beautiful Pasco County beautiful. And I'm all for beautification of Pasco County. With the tree mitigation funds, it would be wonderful if there could be a massive tree planting with that mitigation fund. For example, there are places along our beautiful Orange Hills bike trail that have no trees. And it's very hard if you're riding a bicycle in Pasco County, and all of a sudden you're like, "There are no trees along this bike trail." And how wonderful it would be if we can get some shade. And then exhausted, find a few trees and take a rest under the trees after biking. The Planning Council is working very, very hard and very wonderfully well on our new tree ordinances. Hopefully, in the future, also our tree mitigation funds can be used to emphasize a stormwater management. We were very lucky this year with the hurricanes and storms, but our trees can really help improve stormwater retention through urban farm street efforts. So we want to preserve even more than 20% of Pasco County's tree canopy. And I know the Planning Council is working very hard on developing this, but sooner or later, just using that tree mitigation fund for massive tree planting, and I know everybody's working very hard on this. Thank you. Have a blessed day.
That's the plan. Thank you very much.
That concludes all that have pre-signed.
Okay, and we can wait. We'll move on to resolution. Yep, someone else?
Robert is signed up.
I know, but he's waiting for JJ to arrive, so that --
He's here.
Oh, he's here. Oh, okay. I can't see you back there. All right. Come on up, Robert. Uh, come on up, Robert.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, I wanted to take this opportunity today to recognize Assistant County Administrator of Public Safety, JJ Murphy, for all that he has done, not only to ensure that the Pasco County residents and visitors are safe, but also to make certain that the men and women of the public safety branch are given the tools, support, and leadership needed to be successful. With today being Mr. Murphy's last day with Pasco County, I believe it's important to reflect on the impact of his leadership and the progress we've made under his guidance. When JJ first came to Pasco, he was immediately thrown into the hot seat. At that time, our department was facing challenges unlike anything we had seen before. Rising call volumes, extended response times, and a mass exodus of experienced firefighters to surrounding agencies. But with his support, advocacy, and collaboration, we were able to confront those challenges head on. Because of his leadership, Pasco County Fire Rescue has, now has more trucks, more personnel, and more resources on the road than ever before. We have not only stabilized our workforce, but we've become a department that others are looking to join, a complete reversal of where we once stood. When it comes to leadership, actions always speak louder than words, and JJ's actions spoke volumes of, volumes. Under his leadership, we established a groundbreaking partnership with Tampa Bay Psychology, providing unlimited confidential mental health visits for our firefighters. That contract has become a model for agencies across the state, ensuring that those who wear, bear the weight of the community's emergencies have the opportunity to protect their own mental health as well. He also played a pivotal role in creating our SWAT paramedic program, something that had been discussed for years but never gained traction until JJ stepped in and helped make it a reality. And when it came to negotiate our most recent contract, he worked with us to achieve the 24/72 work schedule, which finally solved a decades-long recruitment and retention issue and restored balance to our firefighters' lives. JJ was not a distant administrator or a name that only appeared on memos. He was boots on the ground, present at major incidents out in the field during large-scale emergencies and always asking one simple question. What do you need? When someone wanted to cancel, when some wanted to cancel the peer fitness training program due to potential overtime costs, he stood firm and said no, that investing in the health and safety of our people was not negotiable. Those are the moments that define true, true leadership. JJ led by example with integrity, compassion, and an unwavering commitment to the people behind the uniforms. He's been a constant presence at our charity, presence at our charity events, at our stations, and alongside us through every major challenge and success we faced. As he prepares to return home to be closer to his family, it's my sincere hope that the spirit of his leadership that he brought to Pasco County, one that valued collaboration, accountability, and respect for those on the front lines, continues to shape the future of the public safety in this community. On behalf of the men and women of Pasco County Fire Rescue and IAFF Local 4420, we want to thank you, JJ, for your service, your friendship, and your unwavering belief in the mission of protecting the people of Pasco County. You've left this place better than you found it, and your impact will be felt for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Will JJ come up?
Jay's gonna come up.
JJ, come on up.
And I think all, I think all said and done, we should take a picture where all said and done.
Yeah.
Goodbye.
And JJ, I have no doubt, I have no doubt that the sheriff's office has the same sentiments. You greatly improved the morale and, um, communication between all those departments, and we're very appreciative of all the hard work that you did.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Well, we want you to speak to us.
Okay. If I could, if I could, before, before he goes. And this is, I've, I've said this before, but I will say this publicly, JJ. Again, I want to thank you. Everything that, uh, you know, Robert stated is true. Uh, you know, we, we brought the public, uh, safety branch back. It was, we were facing a great unknown, right? We, we had a jail that was coming to us. We did not understand what that was going to mean, what that was going to. As Robert said, we had challenges, uh, within the fire department. And, and I remember sitting down with you and laying out these challenges and kind of saying, look, this is, this is where, where we need to go with it. And you, you took the bull by the horns. And, you know, we've got, we've got a model, a model jail facility that's, uh, doing a lot of great, a lot of great things. A fire department that, you know, I think Robert already spelled out, everything, everything good with that. Uh, but your focus on mental health, um, your, your thoughtfulness, um, in, in looking at things from, uh, from a higher level is always appreciated. So it contributed greatly at the executive level on, on county issues. So, uh, you know, we, uh, your counsel will be missed, your friendship will be missed, and, uh, you will be missed here. But we understand your, your reasons for moving on, and, uh, we just, just want to wish you the best. And I just thank you for, for everything that you've done for us in such a short period of time.
Thank you, Mike.
Commissioner, Commissioner Marion.
Uh, JJ, I'd like to say, you know, since you've been here, I mean, we've been to DC, uh, lobbied successfully to bring money back to this county to, to help get the things the firefighters, uh, needed to get, EMS people. Your leadership there has been phenomenal. Calming the relations when you got here, uh, as Mike was just saying, was, it was, it was a tense time for everyone. And, and I think this board has always supported the, the, the group for firefighters, EMS, and, and just try to work to get things better. But the communication wasn't coming in. You find out what the issues were, brought the issues, talked with them, found it all out, figured it all out, brought it to us so we could resolve these things, to give the positive support we wanted every step of the way. And the innovativeness you have to, to bring on the project that we're trying to get done. I just can't thank you enough. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, one of the things I remember, you blew your knee out. You were hobbling along, could barely walk. And I'm like, what are you doing? You were at the pinning. You're like, I would miss it. That's leadership. And like, like he said, you are always boots on the ground. And, and like, you just inspire people to do better. And, and we are, we are gonna miss you, but know that as a commission, we're gonna carry the torch for public safety and make you proud. So, um, best of luck. I hope you, I hope you're, you come back and visit, and when you do, we can all get together. And, um, I'll be praying for you on your trip today.
Commissioner Oakley.
JJ, thank you is, um, doesn't seem like a big enough word to express, um, all the good things you've brought to this department, public safety, and, um, just the way you carried out what needed to be done at the right time. It was done. And I certainly appreciate, all of us appreciate exactly what you have done for Pasco County and the citizens of Pasco County while you've been here. I'd rather just turn you down and not let you go, but I know you're not gonna let us keep you like that. But I certainly appreciate you and hope you come back sooner than later. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Well, from understanding, you're, you're moving the snowbird status, right? That's kind of what you're doing, moving north, keeping your house down here on the water. It's not necessarily a bad thing. No, it was a pleasure coming on, coming on with you, helping, helping me understand, um, what it's like to be one of five jailers now, essentially, right? And, uh, understanding the cost and the price tag that goes along and with, with managing, managing a jail and what the folks need to run it. Um, and then everything you've done for our fire department and, and helping add clarity and, and confidence in our votes to give the folks what they need and, um, and help us, you know, navigate the bureaucracies along the way to help us capture outside funding to support not just our firefighters, but to help the residents and our taxpayers of our county. So, you know, we'll miss you. Don't go too far away. Raider's probably gonna miss this, uh, nice weather we have here.
Right.
He probably, maybe he'll nip at you. But, uh, best, best of luck to you and, and your family.
All right. We're gonna, we're gonna come down and take a photo. And County Administrator, you're welcome to join in. And, um, I don't know what. Oh, you can say things. Yes, you're allowed.
Okay. I just want to thank you all for your comments. Mike, and Commissioners, the, uh, the coworkers that I had. It has been the highlight of my career, working here. You spoke about public safety. In a grand scope, public safety in Pasco County, and the public safety branch is one thing. But public safety being, you know, the sheriff's office, 911, emergency management, and then the varsity team being fire rescue and corrections. These people give up their lives, their holidays, uh, their health, to make sure that the rest of us are protected. And, um, I would like to make sure that continues so that. You guys have made significant investments in public safety. Uh, I'm honored to say, over the last two days, uh, Mike must be nervous. Raider's walking right up to him there, checking him out. We moved 500 inmates over to the new facility over the last two days. Not without incident. Uh, when you take, uh, prisoners, 70% being felons, and tell them, we're gonna move them, you know, sometimes it's not great. But our team was dedicated. They worked through the holiday, and, and that move happened early. You know, in terms of fire rescue, yes. You know, you, a, a lot of you know that we were losing 75 to 100 firefighters a year. We were a training ground for other counties and cities. And today, because of your leadership and your investment, significant investment, we're about to embark on the 72-hour downtime for these, uh, firefighters and EMS personnel who, who do great work. Uh, but they do stressful work, and they, they Narcan people back to life. You can't talk about that, and then you're supposed to go home and, and cut cake with your family. Like, sometimes you're like, really? That just happened? Uh, so thank you for understanding. And they pointed out the investment in physical health, but also the investment in mental health. And, uh, I thank you all very much.
I should have had one of my jewelry. Well, JJ is gonna be here all day. Okay. Um, now we are on to the consent agenda. No, RS1. Okay. RS1?
Yes, ma'am. A resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County declaring the month of November as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month and commending Gulfside Healthcare Services for its outstanding service and dedication to the citizens of Pasco County. Whereas hospice and palliative care provide the highest quality of care to patients and families and bring comfort, love, and respect for all those they serve in communities across the nation and here in Pasco County. And whereas hospice and palliative care providers take the time to ask what's important to those they are caring for and listen to what their patients and families say. And whereas hospice and palliative care professions, including physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselors, health aides, and clergy, provide comprehensive and compassionate care that makes the wishes of each family and patient a priority. And whereas through pain management and symptom control, caregiver training and assistance, and emotional and spiritual support, patients can live fully until their final moments, surrounded and supported by the faces of loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. And whereas providing quality hospice and palliative care reaffirms our belief in the essential dignity of every person, regardless of age, health, or social status, and that every stage of human life deserves to be treated with the utmost respect and care. And whereas every year, more than 1.72 million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States with 5,693 patients cared for by Gulfside Hospice in Pasco County. And whereas more than 430,000 trained volunteers contribute 21 million hours of service to hospice programs annually, with over 48,000 hours of service being provided locally by Gulfside's 218 active volunteers. And whereas hospice and palliative care providers encourage all people to learn more about the options of care and to share their wishes with family, loved ones, and their healthcare professionals. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares the month of November as National Hospice and Palliative Care in Pasco County and commends Gulfside Healthcare Services for its outstanding service and dedication to the citizens of Pasco County. Done a resold and regular session with a quorum president voting this 12th day of November, 2025.
Move to approve. Second?
On favor? Hi. I'm sorry, was there, is there anyone here from? Oh, I couldn't see you. You were hidden back there. I was like, where's Linda? Uh, we would have had you come up.
Yeah, bring it, bring it to.
And then anyone, anyone who's here with you.
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. Nice to see all of you. Um, on behalf of our Board of Directors, our entire staff, and our volunteers, I would just like to thank the support from the county commissioners through the years. Uh, we've been exist, in existence nearly 38 years, and today we serve nearly 700 hospice patients and 300 palliative care patients every single day in Pasco County alone. Uh, you have supported us through so many of our initiatives and growth through the years, and we could not do it without, without you. I also want to congratulate and thank JJ because Fire, uh, Pasco County Fire Rescue has helped thousands of our patients through the years in dire situations, and we couldn't do it without them either. So, thank you very much for all your support. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, just for the record, could you go ahead and give us your name?
I'm sorry. Linda Ward, President and CEO of Gulfside Healthcare Services.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to thank you for all the work you do here in Pasco County. It means a lot to a lot of families. And it's a very sad time when they come to you and, um, the last days of their lives, actually, that they, you helped them through that, that time. So, it's a very sad issue, but, but one that's also very helpful to a lot of services.
Thank you, Ryan. You've been very supportive, too. You've come to our care center and supported us as well many times. So, we appreciate it. Jack's running our hospice, uh, run through the years. Catherine's always around. All of you have really supported us. I started, we have 30 patients in, uh, 21 years ago, and, and now to have all of the support and the growth through Pasco, we greatly appreciate it.
And you have a new one coming up.
We have a new care center opening very soon in Newport Ritchie. We have our Ruckey Care Center here in, in Zephyr Hills. And, uh, so, and each of you have also supported our growth through the years into other counties. But this is our home. This is our foundation. Pasco County will always be the hub.
Such a sad but wonderful thing that you do. And, and my, my heart goes out to the people who work with you and, and help take care of our, our loved ones in, in a very tough time.
Yeah. The staff is, they're really the champions of our organization. My job is to take care of them so they could take care of our patients.
I want to take a photo with everybody, say what else we say.
Comments, like Seth?
Seth? He might not have experienced this yet. He's a youngster.
We've experienced it several, several times, and it's, um, how do y'all work with the families to take such a time of sadness and uncertainty in, in turning into a more positive experience, if you will? I'm not really sure how to describe it, but those who've been through this situation know, know the feelings that I'm trying to describe here. How your team and your nurses help and help the families and, uh, manage that, um, that phase of life and, and for y'all to keep your spirits about you and, and give the families, you know, confidence in, in helping their loved ones through that time is something that, um, is a, is a, is a learning. that, um, is a, is a, is a learning and growing experience, and it's something that, that never leaves you. So your team are, are, are really special folks for stepping into that, that phase of folks' lives and, and helping folks get through it. It's something that I think most everybody will always remember, and it's truly one of those situations where people don't remember, you know, what you may have said to them, but they remember how you made them feel. And, uh, so that's the best way I describe it. So, thank you all for coming here today.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner?
Hi. Yeah, it just takes a special person to do that job, and a life is hard, and you all just somehow make it just this peaceful transition, and the staff is absolutely amazing, so caring. Um, I've, I've, I've been through that situation multiple times, and I just can't say enough about how they make not only the patient feel, but the family feel. So, what you all do is just absolutely amazing, so thank you.
You're welcome, and I'll pass your comments on to the team because they really feel honored by being in those very intimate, private situations with patients and families. They led us into their lives, and we don't take it for granted, but our team loves to do it. They just love their work.
I have goosebumps right now. They're just amazing, they're like angels.
Yeah, they are, they are. Thank you very much.
Commissioner?
Thank you, and I want to say hospice is just such a critical place, such a critical role for families, it's, it's been, my aunts volunteered for them many times, and sadly, when my uncle was passing, uh, they were in there to help and just made such a difference for the whole family, so I've seen it directly on both ends, and it's been awesome. But you, Linda, you've been a superstar from day one, from when you went to build your first facility over here to, uh, the other side over here, and what you've done in, I can't believe in 21 years.
Yeah, I can't believe it either.
I've been recorded one over here.
You've been absolutely phenomenal, your whole team is incredible. Thank you for all the great work you do to make, make Pasco a better place.
Thank you so much, my pleasure. It's been a privilege.
Let's get that photo. Somewhere. Okay, give me some of your board members. Do you want? I couldn't see you. Oh, thank you.
Is the Gulfside team on the call?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have a round?
I mean, I've got one.
Bubbles come right here.
Okay, now we're on to the consent agenda, and I have a full list. I have C-23 by Commissioner Oakley, poll discuss. C-25, Waitman, poll discuss. C-28 by Ms. Farrell, withdraw. And that's the one that, um, you added my district to, it was incorrect, okay. Uh, Oakley, C-30, poll and discuss. C-37, poll discuss. Oakley, C-38, poll and discuss. And Commissioner Oakley and Mike Carballo, C-53, poll and discuss. All right, are there any other items that wish to be polled by any commissioner? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Move approval on all the other items on the consent agenda. Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. And Commissioner, I will go by and check out that pantry in the Elfris Community Center.
It's not up yet?
No, wait a sec. All right, um, we need to get the roads fixed around there. Um, we're gonna go on to C-23.
I, I pull this item because of, um, being very grateful of the things that, uh, Wilton Simpson and his family's done for the community and, and throughout Pasco County, a lot of different things have happened due to his leadership, and I just want to say thank you to him and his family.
It's gonna be Simpson City pretty soon instead of Dixie.
Oh, yeah. Well, he's done a lot for us. Andrew, you have something to add, or?
Uh, no, just, uh, we do appreciate Senator Simpson and, uh, Commissioner Simpson now, and, uh, we just thank him for his contribution to this property, and just know that we are working to add his name to the building and updating the plaque associated with the building as well, so all of that will be hopefully here before the grand opening next month early.
Okay.
Excellent.
So I'll move approval. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
C-25?
Yes. Uh, so pull this just to highlight the, uh, the tree dollars moving to work rather quickly after we discussed it, so, Mr. Carballo?
Yeah, I would, I would say it's a, it's a great example of this board's commitment and our commitment here at the county to, uh, you know, to use these funds to reinvest and beautify the community, and that was kind of serendipitous that we had a public comment on the same thing about using those dollars to, to beautify and add to the tree canopy. You know, from an administrative perspective, I will tell you from a budgeting perspective, you know, making the move to, uh, to, to, you know, use these funds instead of project funds opens up other dollars that can be used in the Public Works Department, so using more restrictive funds is, is, is the approach that we need to be taking, and since we've, we've made, this board has made the changes to the, to the treaty ordinance and the use of those funds, you're gonna see more good stuff like this, this to come, so I just thank the board for, for approving that and pushing us on, on this to, to make these things happen.
Yeah, and for, for the record, what, what's, what's that, uh, account have roughly 10 million dollars?
Something like that.
Something 10 million dollars, and we have quite a bit of money to, to go to work, and so let the record show that we can actually move the needle with projects here, so pretty neat. With that, I move approval.
Well, um, before you, before you make the motion, or, okay, we have a motion and a second under discussion. Um, I just want the public to know that while this one is starting on Little Road, we have a plan to move across the county, and I don't remember what our next road is, it might be 41?
I'd have to, Brandon, Jason.
Or call your Parkway, but the plan is to move across the county and every, and hit every area in, you know, rotating sequence. I don't think this is just gonna stop on Little Road, it's gonna go all over. Commissioner?
Thank you. No, it's a, it's a great, great way to spend money which takes away from having to spend taxpayer dollars, but it goes with mitigation fund money which is, which helps us stretch the budget more and, and get more things done. One of the things I, I came along today and I drove a little bit differently, I went 52 all the way out to Fort King Road, uh, and in doing so.
That's what I did, yeah.
They had some really nice floral bushes in the ground that, they don't work quite everywhere, but wherever we can put that would actually cut down mowing as well and cut down of them expense, so I'd like to still take a look. I know we had like these one stretches on one side of the road, the other side of the road, but I think we should take a look at expanding that more, and then even toward the end when it gets to where they don't want the height, uh, that peanut grass, we can add that into it as well.
Yes.
Can you take a picture of it so we can see the, the plant and top of that?
Sure.
Yeah, they, uh, and you know, we didn't do the Clinton Avenue extension, DOT did it at their expense, and they're gonna maintain it, so it's amazing. Um, I'd like to know how that happened, but I'm just very grateful that it did. And, uh, but I think, you know, how your county presents itself on its public roads is very important. And, okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, C-28 is withdrawn. Um, is it withdrawn for Scribner's error, or what, why is it withdrawn?
Yes, ma'am, just the, the logistics of, of making the changes on the record, we just assume, just withdraw it and we'll, we'll bring it back in subsequent meeting. It in no way affects the grants, that's all done.
Okay.
It was literally a $10.
Because we want that to keep working.
So, we'll.
But they, they had left off my district, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, C-30, Commissioner Oakley. Shortlist and delegation of negotiations and execution of agreements to county administrator.
This was the shelter item, Commissioner?
Oh, this is shelter. Keith Wiley is behind that. Keith and I have been working with the city of Dade City and, and many about this shelter, and actually last year was one of our asks for the shelter last year, so, um, hopefully we'll be able to achieve that 20 million dollars that we're looking for from the state to, to match what we're gonna match, the 20 million dollars.
That's a big number.
It's a 40 million dollar project, so, very much needed on East Pasco, and for a regional shelter to be able to help people from Hillsborough and Pinehouse Counties, I think is very warranted for, for what we're asking for, for the state, for, for shelter, for people coming off the coast, so.
Chair, I think we need to ask for a million for each degree of the temperature swing we have over, over a 24-hour period, and then it would be fully, fully funded.
Yeah. But that's a good project that's coming, and it, it has a lot of emergency services with it that provides oxygen off of those people that, that come here that need that care during the bad weather times, and getting them off that coast, so.
Absolutely.
And out of harms way, so.
We are supporting your.
So I move approval.
Second, second, more discussion?
Yes.
Um, and I'm, I'm very happy that we're moving this forward, trying to get the help from the state again. Uh, hopefully they'll see it because what the people from the east side of the county went through was devastating. We know a lot of times when on the west side, when the storm's coming in, storm surge coming, people don't want to go to Westy Chapel, they don't want to go to Dade City, so having it closer to where the people are is, is definitely a need, and there's so many other benefits to it to be multipurpose, and I think we should add this with our, um, as far as we talk about what to do with federally, as far as things, I think February when we go to DC for the NACO conference, or before, we add this into it, uh, as far as when on February last.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that we do a separate trip as well, because sometimes it's so hard to watch.
I think part of this is getting the design ready and we're moving forward on the design.
We still want to, we still want to set the stage to ask for the money now to get ourselves a position, because it takes time to get it anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to make a motion?
Some move?
You have a motion, second, all right.
Oh, okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. C-37. This is, uh, design and post-design service for Curly Road sidewalks.
Yep. That, that's been, the roads have been needed for a long time, and so we're gonna get some of the sidewalks done in that area that, like I say, population's growing, and more and more people need sidewalks to, there are schools near that area too, that, that need the sidewalks for people to be able to walk to school and things of that nature, so.
Is this funding coming from our federal funding?
This is, uh, part of the legislative ask from.
Oh, from last year? Okay, excellent.
Yep.
Who's?
Move approval.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, C-38, Commissioner Oakley.
All right, this one's.
FDOT, Pasco Elementary, Fort King Road from Hester.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's sidewalk we've been asking for, for a long time, right along , uh, Morning Side Drive and, and Fort King Road.
Is this gonna be a multi-use path, or is there already a multi-use path there?
No, I think this is, is it a?
Because the trail, the Orange Belt Trail is coming up there.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not the Orange Belt Trail.
But aren't we bringing Orange Belt over to Morning Side?
I don't know that.
That's the route, preferred route on the?
Yeah, I don't think the overall route study's been blessed yet by the board.
Well, then, I do not want to build a sidewalk that we're gonna tear up and put a multi-use. What's go, that, I thought we all agreed it was coming to Morning Side, then hooking, what's the Dade City Trail? Uh, Hardy?
Hardy Trail, yes. I don't know, I don't know that route because I haven't been told that route on the, on that trail. I know it was meant to hit it, but I don't know what.
Yeah, can you put a map up, please? We're already tearing up a new sidewalk on Old 52.
Uh, go to Fort King Road.
See, uh, so you know that, that trail you're talking about, the Hardy Trail, it goes along the old railroad track bed that goes down through Dade City?
I know, but I understood the connector for Orange Belt that, um, the Booker Drive.
So I don't know where they're connecting that to the Hardy Trail.
I think it's coming Old 52 to Morning Side north.
Morning Side runs east and west.
Well, I, I don't know that road except for that discussion. Who, who?
We've been six years waiting on that, Morning Side to be taken from Fort King.
I know, but, but maybe we just need it to be a little wider. So where's the map?
Come here.
And, um, do you, is there anyone from?
Panas, assist.
Okay. I don't think that's where it is.
Panas Konzes, assistant.
This is not where it is.
Services Director. Um, the Hardy Trail is to the east of, uh, of, of Fort King Road, so it's, it's not running, excuse me, it's not running along Fort King Road.
Can we get the area up where we're talking about?
I'm working on it.
Okay. And then we'll need to see the proposed route for the Orange Belt.
Do you miss Joanna yet?
Need to go. Go.
Keep going north.
It's by the high school, right?
There you go, zoom in.
I'm learning.
Hickory Hills. See, go left.
I don't think they're.
Left.
It's over here on Fort King.
Yeah. There you go. Just put the segment up between Pasco High School and.
It's up.
Going north.
There you go. There's a school right there.
Yeah, so I.
And the paragraph.
Um, yes?
The route study for the Orange Belt, uh, Orange Belt, uh, Trail is not yet finalized, so we don't have a final alignment for that trail. Um, from what I know is, it seems like the State Road 52, or now County Road 52 alignment is the most predominant alternative, but we're not ready yet to recommend any alignment there. The study's right now being finalized. It will be brought to you for a presentation, I believe sometime in January or, uh, uh, next year. So, uh, in the meantime, like Commissioner Oakley mentioned, there is an existing need for pedestrians and students.
A hundred percent.
Along Fort King Road, so this sidewalk will take, provide a sidewalk from south of Advent Health all the way to Coleman Road, it's about short of a mile of sidewalk, and will provide access to Pasco High and also to the fairgrounds.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yeah, no.
So is that, is, is, I think I'm looking at the, was looking at the right thing, and this, I'm, I'm not sure if you want to put a point to where exactly we're talking about here, but is the trail that runs right now from the south running up to the north in the dead ends, correct?
Hardy?
Is that?
The Hardy Trail, you can see it over to the right.
Okay.
Um, go up north of that arrow, north of, there's the Hardy Trail, right?
Yeah, Hardy Trail, dead ends there.
Right there, and we've got to get from there to there.
All right, is this something, I'm talking about from the south now going to the north. Is there, is there a road, the trailer that like stops at one point? Is that what we're talking about?
Hardy Trail, yeah, stops at some, some point, and the extension of Morning Side Drive, which has a multi-use path, will connect with Hardy Trail and take it all the way to use.
So that connection to the south will now go on with something existing and go through, and that trail is only about seven, eight feet wide, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's gonna be about the same width?
The, the trail.
The sidewalk project will be the same width as what's there?
It's about five feet, it's gonna be five-foot sidewalk.
It's not.
Or, no.
I don't know why we wouldn't do it seven feet.
This is a pedestrian sidewalk.
Yeah, I know, to, to, you know, to, to people, five feet, I mean, kids are gonna be, they're riding their bike to school, they're gonna have to go off the road, off the trail, into the grass.
All right, so let's get back to, if you would, on the map, show us exactly where this thing is, because I think you're, I don't know if you're in the right height or not, but.
Do you see Hester? Do you know? Right below Advent Health, Dade City, right?
There, yes.
North to Coleman, so Coleman all the way past the intersection of Old San安 Road and Coleman Avenue.
It's after the apex, the, the two roads converge.
But I think some of that, some of that sidewalk is five-foot and some of it is six-foot, so it's not, it's not the trail yet.
All right, this is Coleman.
All right, so just right along that.
South, south of the.
So Hardy will be a different thing that we can add on and make it wider and make that a trail as it's a trail. Is that correct?
This is being paid for with lab funding?
Yes.
With what funding?
The construction, yes.
The construction, so, can you explain the local agency program in 30 seconds?
Yes, it's, basically they fund projects that are connected to, uh, safe routes to schools and things, and those similar programs, so thi, this money came for that purpose, helping schools get better access for students.
So that, this is, the, who, whose money, is it federal money?
These, these are federal money through the.
Did this go through the MPO ranking?
Through the lab program.
This sidewalk?
No, I don't think so.
This did not go through the ranking process that we have at MPO?
I'm not sure, this was funded by the, from, uh, the lab pro, program, the design was funded through the lab program and.
The lab program. The lab program is managed by the state, it is federal funds, but the lab program is overseen by the state, and so.
Have we ever done any lab?
We've had plenty of lab projects in this county.
Interesting, I don't remember hearing that one. Is there a way we can at least get that to six feet so two people can walk side by side, or someone can pass someone safely on the sidewalk?
We will, we will look into it, there may be right-of-way issues, usually that's what keeps us from going to six feet. Usually, our purpose and intent is to give as much width as we can, but most of the time we are limited by the right-of-way, and that's when we go to the minimum, which is five feet. But we will, we will look into it.
I think, I think part of it is scheduled to be five feet, but another part is six-foot, so I don't know which part.
And I'll say.
It might be right along Morningside, but right along there, there's no sidewalk, there's a lot of kids.
No, it needs a sidewalk.
Walk to the high school right there.
Yeah, and kids ride a lot of different kind of motorized things to school these days, and if you can't pass each other safely, it causes.
Oh, I understand.
Emergency issues when one of them has to, you know.
And to that point, Commissioner, you have an item later on in today's agenda where we're looking at pedestrian standards across all of our collectors and arterials, so I think, you know, that move too will set the stage to have less of these to have to deal with in the future.
It'd be good to take this and actually go back and look at it and see where the Orange Belt Trail's going to come in, and it'd be good to have that knowledge for both, actually.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and may.
Take that back and report back on.
Yes.
Commissioner Mariana?
So I would, I would say that, you know, what we're working at, and I just drove up this road again, I've been down there when all the flooding that we had with the people, or the low areas had been out of the holes for like months, this air hole area is low, the area that's alongside the road is very, is very narrow, so I'm sure that it is tight to that because it's tough to get the sidewalk in, but I think it's a much need sidewalk because it's a, it's a dangerous road to have kids on, so I, I'm going to support it to move on to it, and when we do the Hardy Road, Hardy Trail, let's make sure we continue that on because it's a, it's a nice trail that just like stops, so that'd be nice to carry that on.
Well, that's how, that's how the, the way the Orange Belt Trail is getting to with Lakucha State Trails, connecting to the Hardy Trail.
Yeah, and that's, and that's good, but this is a separate need, separate thing, it's a good setup.
But I would like to say, I would like to look for money from somewhere to make it all six feet, if we have to buy more right-of-way, let's find the money and make it safe.
You're going to take away drainage? You're going to take away drainage, we try.
Yeah, there's a number of challenges, I know it just may seem like a sidewalk, but nobody wants to walk through a sidewalk that's underwater either, and so drainage, right-of-way width, those types of things do come into play in looking at clear zones, so they have a number of challenges that they, that they'll go through, but we'll report back on.
Yeah, we will look into it.
This particular one, and just know that the staff does have an eye to the future, understands what the board wishes are when it comes to these sorts of things.
So I think that'd be good, report back, see where the Orange Belt Trail plays into this, so we make sure that Hardy connection, all trail connection gets, gets done the right way, so.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, C-53.
Ma'am, I thought Commissioner Oakley and I both kind of had this, had this one removed, but I'd like to bring Keith Wiley up to give the board a brief presentation on the importance of this conservation effort.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Keith Wiley, Director of Parks Recreation, Natural Resources, and Mike, you're right, this should have been a regular item, because this is a big deal, so.
Yeah, it is.
Very, very, yeah, very big deal. Largest acquisition, the ELAM program is processed to date, a little, little over 1,900 acres. Just a quick recap, you know, the ELAM program's targeting to purchase and protect lands within the ecological corridors, those areas you see up here on this map. This is, why this is so special, is it's actually one entire corridor plus extra, so very, very important connection between Crossbar Albar property, Connor Preserve, and obviously also connects through the Cypress Creek Corridor to the, the property to the northeast. We are partnering with the state, it's the Family Rural Lands Protection Program, so this is going to be a 50/50 acquisition. The funding agreement in front of you today should hopefully get us to closing in January, so that's exciting to be able to partner with the state in a program that they prioritize and is very important to them. This is just the map of the actual ranch itself, the dotted lines are the actual ecological corridor that is, that was mapped out and identified in the COP plan, but is also an actually attached to the Ecological Corridor Ordinance and Land Development Code. So you can see you're connecting both major portions to the north and to the south. The team also has worked with FDOT to ensure that there's an actual upland wildlife crossing when they do widen State Road 52. We participated in the actual design of that crossing, we're also going to be contributing to the funding of that, so when you, when you line up all this together, it's something very, very exciting and something that we should be proud of. This acquisition is going to bring the ELAM inventory well over 8,000 acres to date since 2005, that does not include the other acreage, park acreage that we manage for the Water Management District, so total inventory is almost 30,000 acres that your Parks Department and Conservation Team actually oversees and manages. So, again, something we probably need to talk about more, quite honestly that we don't, I know Commissioner Waitman, you've pulled some items in the past, Commissioner Oakley, thank you for highlighting this, I'm actually going to go back to this, this is important. So the Ecological Corridor Ordinance, technically through, through the LDC, when an applicant is going to actually increase density, it, it causes us an opportunity to negotiate with them. As you can see, what would the team outline here is the total residential units and the commercial entitlements that was basically, you know, being proposed for this property. Through the purchase of a conservation easement, we're going to basically be protecting, I would say 90% of what was originally proposed, so that's pretty impressive. With that, I just want to thank you for the highlight, if there's any questions.
Well, of course, you know what I'm going to ask. Go ahead, Commissioner Mariana.
All right, so it says it's going to decrease the residential units by 225 units?
Yes.
Not, but still a total of 3,500.
So I don't actually have those numbers in front of me unless the team knows, but I, I think that yes, so there's, so to the west, there's going to still be residential entitlements.
In Area 1?
Yes.
Which is not part of, which is not part of this.
No.
It's not part of.
It's not part of it, yeah.
This is the main ranch.
There's the actual acquisition.
I was looking at the other parcel, okay.
So.
We're the, we're the main ranch, is what we're purchasing.
Yeah, I got, I got it.
And so that won't be developed any, any further than what it is, and it's very good, it's open space for, in our county, and it's in District 1 of East Pasco County, and we have very rural nature of all the people in this area wanting to keep rural and keep open space.
And it's the largest district.
It just adds to that.
[laughing].
Just, just to the west of this property, they have a residential area there, but then you have some large lots, lodge homes, give you more open space in, in this district, and the fact of it is that it's very important for citizens. Palmetto Ridge is going to be developed, but it's a 3,600 acre to the west of this property, 3,600 acres that only 1,800 acres will be developed, and you have 1,800 acres there that'll also be open space that connects to this property, so it's very good that we have a lot of open space in, in some of our areas in the county.
Commissioner Waitman?
Thanks, Chair, yeah. You know, it all starts, and I'll say it every time, it all starts with a willing landowner to sell their property at a significant price reduction, Kirklands, the Phillips', and so just again on the record, thank, thank the Phillips family and 4G for their willingness to explore the opportunity and then take action to connect the corridors and preserve here in Pasco, and so, you know, landowners out there, if you're listening, we'd love to talk to you if you have, if you have something, and, but, but thank you to the landowners who choose to participate in our ELAM program and, and the work with the Florida Department of Ag.
Commissioner Oakley?
Well, I left out one thing about it, and, and it does take good partners to be able to do good things for the county. The Phillips family have been very plus on being a great partner for Pasco County in a lot of different ways, and the reclaimed water that we put out there, 2 million gallons a day, and takes care of issues out there and the water issues, and helps the environment come back, so, so many things that, and the Phillips family's been a part of, they're probably the number one group on our emergency list for when we have troubles, they step up and, and come and help us, so we've been great partners for a long time and will continue to be, so it's very good, and thank, thank the family for, for their efforts in putting this property up for sale.
Absolutely. Can you go back to the other map? So Keith, we had worked with, is that where the original quarter was?
Yes.
Okay, so we had worked with them when they were doing their plan on the multi-use, you know, the trail that would go up, connect 52 to Crossbar Albar.
Right.
And that's still allowed, I mean, we haven't lost that connection, right?
No, we have not, no.
Okay. And I, I too want to thank the Phillips family, and I want to let you all know, Avis recently had a pretty serious surgery, and we, she's recovering well, and we sent her our best wishes for a speedy recovery, or she'd be down here already, so I thought I'd be hanging out with my buddy already, but she won't be down for another month. And also, the, the county's paying half in the Rural Lands Program, the Commissioner Simpson started, I believe, is paying the other half, so this is a joint purchase.
So move approval.
We're very grateful. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a big acquisition right there. Okay, we are now on to the Rs. No, that, that clock is an hour off.
Oh, it's hour B.
I know, that's, I do need to say to someone, this clock is an hour off, it's been throwing me off, then I have to remember, but it says it's 12:22 and it's 11:22. Okay, so we are on to R-55.
Good morning, David Engel, Planning and Economic Development Director. Today, I'm very happy to present to you an economic incentive agreement. It's a, it's always a happy experience to bring these projects to the board, but this is extra special because Vantage Point AI is an existing business in Pasco County, they've been here for decades, and as well as a happy opportunity to present an agenda item, it's also a celebratory agenda item. So I'm going to go through the project very quickly, outline the economic incentives that we are proposing for the project, then Turner Arbor of the Pasco Economic Development Council will speak, giving you some history regarding the project, and Mr. Lane Mendelson, the President and CEO of Vantage Point AI, will be wrapping up to answer questions and just give you a little bit of history on the business. The property in question is located in Wesley Chapel, it's just due east of I-75 in a business area, and Vantage Point AI is purchasing this building and going to renovate it and inside and create an opportunity here for 60 new full-time jobs coming in, into this facility. Those jobs will be high-paying at 150% of the average Pasco average wage, and the total employment, that's the direct of the 60 people, is direct, indirect is business-to-business, induced is businesses have to expand when demand is expanding here in the county, it totals 85 jobs here in the county. The annual contribution to the gross county product, this will be every year once it's built out, $23.4 million to our local economy, and this is a very standardized economic incentive deal, $331,047 total. The predominant amount of the incentive will be $240,000 for the four-year payout of the job creation incentive, and might I add that all of these incentives are maximums and are all performance-based. You have to produce the jobs, show us the W-2s, and we pay out 25% a year for four years. Because it is a enormous, high-paying opportunity here for the county, we're giving a high-impact fee bonus of $61,047, that's a break on the ad valorem taxes, paid out over 10 years, 50% of the ad valorem rebate in years one through five, and then 25% six through 10. And lastly, we have a $30,000 max grant training incentive to allow these new employees to be brought in here and, and trained properly. This is a target industry, it's a, it's a software service, they have market, capital market forecasting algorithms and artificial intelligence, which they train people to use and benefit for, for, for their businesses and portfolios. So I'd like to introduce Pasco EDC, Mr. Arbor.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair, Turner Arbor with Pasco EDC. It's great to be with you on this Wednesday morning, cold Wednesday morning. Vantage Point AI is exactly the kind of project that Pasco County sets out to attract in our high industry, our high-technology industries, and most people don't know that we have quite a few high-tech companies here in Pasco, and we're excited to highlight one today. This company's investing over $4 million in purchasing and renovating a 10,000-square-foot building in Wesley Chapel, and they're going to create 60 new jobs over the next three years in, in disciplines like AI programming, customer, customer support in AI and in the finance industry. While artificial intelligence is often viewed as replacing jobs, this is a great example of a company that's creating jobs through AI, so we're really excited to see that, and technology is something that flows throughout all of our target industries, so that we're going to hopefully have more companies like this in the future, and this is a great testament to Pasco County's environment for these companies to grow and expand, and helps us on the front of recruiting more companies like this to the region, hopefully not your competitors, but others in the same industry. We're really excited for the project, they've already begun to hire some of the jobs, and with that, I'd like to bring up Lane, talk a little bit about the company, multi-generational company here in Pasco County, and.
Good morning, everybody. Really glad to be here, this is a very exciting time because we're growing, and growth can be sometimes a little scary when you're stepping out, doing something new and expanding. We're also, at the same time as we're growing, we're really making a push towards having in-office staff again.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, we're, we're doing it in a little bit of a unique way, we're not requiring anybody who's remote, we do have quite a few people remote, none of them are going to be required to come in office, so we're saying, hey, if you're, if you're productive and you're doing well in your remote position, we're going to allow you to stay remote, but we're going to start hiring in-office, and it's just, we found it to be better from a teamwork perspective, from a communication perspective, accountability, and that is part of our growth plan, so part of it is growing the numbers, but also growing the numbers in an environment where we can all collaborate and have better teamwork and communication. I want to start by saying that, thank you to my dad, my dad is here.
Ah.
If it wasn't for him, I literally would not be here today, so thank you for, for everything, for being a great father, and he's taught me a lot about business, he's taught me a lot about integrity, a lot about how to communicate with people and have good relationships with people, and, and that's what I, I've learned and I'm passing on to my daughters as well. And thank you for having the, the insight and the foresight and the innovation to start a, a software company in 1979. I wasn't around in 1979, I came on the scene in 1980, but my dad said that when he told his father-in-law, my grandfather, "Yeah, I'm going to start a software company, I'm going to leave my job as a hospital administrator, I'm going to start a software company," my grandfather said, "Nobody has computers, who is going to want your software?" And my father said, "They will, it will come, you'll see," and, and we can see how things have progressed. So, over the past 46 years that we've had the, the family business, we've been here in Pasco since 1987, and you can imagine, as, as running a family business, there's ups, there's downs, not always easy, but we've persevered and we, I think, are in the best position now, more so than ever. We've learned so much about how to operate in different environments, in different generational of, of, of employment and staffing, and with technology, and like Turner said, we are not using AI to replace people, we're using AI to take people who are talented and help them to better leverage their talent, and, and I think that's going to be another key to our growth, so I'm very excited about that. I want to thank Mr. Mike Corbalo, when I reached out to him and said we want to grow and we, you know, want to see what we can do to grow in Pasco, he was kind enough to direct me over to David Engel, who was very helpful and put me in touch with Turner, and Turner and Bill Cronin did a great job helping to package everything up and helping me to communicate to them what our growth strategy and growth plans are and, and get us to this point, and I just want to say thank you to all of you for your support of, of me personally and my family and our business, and, and also to, to all of you. I know all of you and I appreciate all of you, and thank you for, for what you do, not just for, for me, my family, for our business, but for all the things that you do in the county. but for all the things that you do in the county. Very proud to be here. I love being here. Moved here when I was seven. First thing I did when it was time for me to move out of my mom and dad's house, I bought the property behind them. And I have enough property around me now that I would love it if both of my daughters would say, "Dad, I'd love to live right there, right near you." And I think the plan is working. I think we're there. You know, 15 and 12, they're not making those decisions yet, but they're definitely talking about the future and being here and being productive members here in Pasco County. And I assure you that as our company continues to grow and flourish, we'll continue our charitable giving and continue to invest back in the community that has invested in us. And I don't take any of this that has been put together, I don't take any of this for granted. I take it very seriously. I know it's a responsibility that I have to lead and grow the company, and I don't take that lightly. And I will give 110% to make sure that we not only hit these numbers of growth and help to employ people at these higher levels of salary, but even exceed that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Oakley.
Okay. I've known Lane for a long time. I think the first time I ever ran for election, Lane had me come to his office there on Pasco Road, and I spoke to his employees there. That was pretty exciting for me. But we've been friends forever since, and family friends. Been out at dinner, celebrated a lot of different things, celebrated his kids doing a lot of different things because one, I think Rachel had her steer, and I happened to buy that steer last year.
That's right.
So his name was Johnny Cash. I can eat the steaks when my wife can't because of his name. So but the fact of it is, a lot of different things there involved in really are things that children aren't to grow up in. Abby's especially, all Abby's done with the Two Good Souls and the monies that have come from that through his children and through his family of all they're doing, working with the county and citizens of the county to make things better, and also to bring up young, future adults and citizens that will care about the county and the citizens in this county. And those two girls will really go a long ways because they certainly appreciate all they've been able to do. So we're very thankful for all that you do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Waitman.
Yeah, Lane, what's this year's steer's name?
Toby Beef.
Toby Beef. Toby Beef. January, February timeframe. No, I was talking, we were talking with Mike Corbala yesterday, and whenever we see these, we have these votes from time to time, the conversation came up that out of all the projects that have been approved, the return on investment with you all is probably, what would you say, Turner? Best out there? So yeah, and it just shows. And it's not just with your business acumen, but what you guys do, you know, with your philanthropy and just giving back and your all-in investment from family to your business to helping others in need throughout our county. And it just makes me very proud and honored to know you all and watch your girls grow up and see what they're involved in, and hopefully have a couple of young girls that, you know, Jamie will be eight Thanksgiving, somebody to look up to as she continues to grow and be involved in our community. So very glad that you all are here today. Thank you for your continued investment and your growth here in the county, and we're proud to help you where we can.
Thank you.
Commissioner. Yeah, I want to say just, I've been on your calls with your staff, and just shout out to your staff that obviously it starts at the top with your leadership, how excited they are to give back. And that is just, like I said, comes from you guys, and we are blessed to have you in our community. And our community looks different because you guys are in it. So thank you so much for everything. I look forward to working with you on Grace's Food Pantry this next quarter. I'm very, very excited. So, great job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mariana.
Thank you. I want to say, Mr. Mendelson, you did a great job raising a great son. Was raising a great family. You meet Mandy and the girls. What you've got going on is just amazing. It's storybooks, as great as it is. So thank you for doing that end, and all you do with good souls and all your other things to help us, greatly appreciated. You're always giving back, looking to what you can do to better the community, and you're teaching your girls along the way to do the same, which is phenomenal. So I know they're going to do great. Just like to highlight for the board, this company is phenomenal, and COVID affected him dramatically.
Yeah.
The building he had on Old Pasco Road, all of a sudden, the people didn't want to come in, didn't want to come back in, obviously with COVID they couldn't, didn't want to come back in, ends up having a great situation financially to have someone else take over the building. But then he's looking to come back in. He can't find a place nearby. Like, he wanted to be in the same area. Like, we looked at that place on Overpass Road, on Old Pasco. We said, "There's office space there." And I was telling you guys that there's people out there, I told the developer, that people need fee-simple office space that they can go invest in and bring the company in. They don't want to just come in and rent from somebody and do something. So I'm going to tell you, what he had to go through to get to this building shouldn't have happened, in a sense. We've got to make sure we keep on helping gentlemen like this to have opportunities to be able to land their business where they want to land it, and not just convert things to apartments because we're getting pressure or other things that, you know, would go on. We need to make sure that these office things come in, because this target industry, as Commissioner Waitman was just mentioning, it sets up a base for economics, where you get the core, you get the high-income people coming in, and that leads to other great things all around, between demographics of homes they can buy and want to buy, between businesses who want to locate here, and help this county grow in a strong way. And that's been something I've been proud of, that great work we've done. But there's more we can do because right now, with what you just went through, shouldn't have happened. We should have had some more space available. So I think we keep that focus, that the opportunities are there. Don't listen to developers looking, trying to make the quick buck. We get to help guys like this guy and the great companies that go on. So I'm very excited that this is coming forward. I think it's going to be great that you're going to bring people in, and you're going to actually double the size of your business, in a sense, because you get the people going to still work remote, but now you get people coming in too. And again, I think it's kind of like helping you, almost like they cut the head off a snake to come back. Well, that's what's going on here. So I think what you're going to do is going to be phenomenal. I have no doubt you're going to meet the expectations here, and you'll probably look for another building. So good luck, and thank you for being in Pasco County. You're a great man.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to say, I think I was the first Commissioner to meet you. Do you think? Because it would have been before Oakley. I know it was before Oakley, but he's been here longer than me. But I think you called me and said, "Hey, I'm a friend of Will Weatherford's. I need to talk to you. I want you to come to my business." And anyway.
Then we did the Commissioner's baby shower.
Yes, and you did the Commissioner's baby shower for a number of years at our market, where we raised money and supplies for the Sunshine Group that works with foster kids. And, you know, when they were taken out of their homes, lots of times, the foster parents didn't have any supplies to take care of these babies. So we were helping them. Well, I can't say anything more than my fellow Commissioners have said. I think you set the bar for how to help your community to be a better place. And generationally, I'm excited to watch your family. You've done, you've just, you're just the shining star, really. You have set the example for others to follow. It'll be hard to follow in your family's footsteps. So I'm excited for you, and let's take a motion and get this project going.
Move approval.
Ma'am, just a little housekeeping. The Office of Economic Growth recommends approval of this economic incentive.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. So all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nay. No nays.
No pressure.
So, great job. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Okay, no, I'm going to keep moving because we're going late here.
Ms. Sheriff.
Yeah?
I think we'll take a picture.
Can we do a quick photo?
All right, we'll do a quick photo.
It's a big deal.
Okay, let's go over this contract. Who's presenting? Mike?
It's this afternoon.
I think originally they wanted to hear this this afternoon, since the board would have to adopt the search arguments in order.
Okay, we can do it this afternoon. I didn't have that on my notes.
Sorry about that.
Oh, to be heard after P-68. I got it. Okay, Commissioner Oakley? Commissioner Ivans?
I went deer hunting. I did not shoot anything, but I saw a lot there. The only 10-pointer I saw was on camera, and it was 3:30 in the morning. So I didn't get it. So anyway, it was good relaxing. But went and visited with Public Works on their quarterly meeting. And I think you went to one over in, Ms. Stark, who went to a quarterly meeting, not this one, but the 9/11.
And they look like they're paying attention.
Yeah. And, well, they do. They're very good. They give out awards for the year of service in the county. And there's so many different moving parts in the Public Works area that you walk in there, it's just amazing at all the good works and good things that happen from a group of people. And that's the only part of it, because there's a lot more than could fit in that room that works in Public Works around. So they do a great job, and I certainly appreciate being able to be there and speak to them. So I'm really grateful for all they do, all of the county, for our citizens. So that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Waitman.
Well, I have to brag, University of South Florida.
Oh, we're not talking college football.
Yes, we are. First time in the college football playoffs. We made it. So go Bulls. It's exciting to see.
Is that why you're wearing green?
Nice tie, yeah.
Something to root for.
They got a ballgame?
Oh, yeah.
Just checking.
Greatest kicker in the country about right now. Thank, I want to thank the school board for having their roundtable. Many of us were there. It was a nice gathering of folks at St. Leo. And thank you, St. Leo, for hosting us. And then Kathy, if Kathy wouldn't mind coming up, put you on the spot. We, Two Good Souls event last week, two weeks ago? Seems recent, but Mendelson's always contributing. He and the girls were there, and they represent the private sector side. Mike Wells, they won. They had the most shoes, but just phenomenal event. Figure we talked about that, some nice press there.
Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Administrator, Public Services. Commissioner Waitman, thank you for being there. Your speech was very inspirational. So thank you. 10 years. I use this as a, my grandson just turned 13. When we started this, he was three. So 10 years we've been doing this. This is behalf of the whole county, is all our constitutional officers that are involved, our amazing staff. We have collected so far to date, I think it's close to 24,000 pairs of shoes and over almost 55, 56,000 pairs of socks. We almost hit the 3,000 mark this year with shoes, and I think it was, I don't know, 5, 6,000 on socks. So, you know, we started this 10 years ago. We were really wondering, man, is this going to work? Is this really going to happen? And when you hear the social workers, every single year that they come here, and the caseworkers, and they were picking out shoes for these kids, they'll tell you. There are kids that still have tape around their sneakers. They cut their toes off the shoes because they don't fit. This is really a blessing, and they, these shoes will be gone by Christmas. So on behalf of all, you almost won, by the way. We snuck you out. Public Services snuck you out a little bit. But, you know, I want to do say, Lane Mendelson, every year, he donates.
We only almost won because Lane chose to join the commission team this year on Two Good Souls.
He ditched me this year. He ditched me and went to you guys.
Yeah, Lane.
We got to find another Lane.
Lane, you want to talk about Two Good Souls and what it means to your family and you're supporting Two Good Souls?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, without Lane.
Abby is our spokesperson now. And I'm confident when I'm long and gone, she will continue the tradition. So.
Yeah, it was really interesting because, I guess, five years ago, we met Kathy at the grand opening of the first family homeless shelter in Pasco. And Rachel was there. You were there.
Yeah.
And my daughter Rachel was, I don't know, 10, maybe 11. And we had packaged up 70, 75 backpacks full of toys and games and hats and little watches and coloring books, so that when a family would come and check in, not a good day, obviously, but the kids were greeted with, "Hey, here's a backpack." Almost like, you know, here's a welcome gift, swag bag. And Rachel felt really connected to that, and she felt really good about that. It was something that she had read that another kid had done in another state. And Ms. Kathy came up to me and said, "Oh, it'd be great if you guys could participate with Two Good Souls, maybe next year." I said, "Okay, well, why next year?" And she said, "Well, our event is next month." This was September, and October was Two Good Souls. I said, "Why can't we do it this year?" She said, "Well, it's only a month away." I said, "We can get shoes and socks in a month. That's not a problem." So that was our first year getting involved. And I said to Abby, "Would you like to work on this with me?" Because she saw Rachel packing the backpacks, and she saw Rachel getting excited about it and talking about it. So this was a really great opportunity for Abby to have her thing. And she felt, she's like, "Yeah, absolutely. I'm really excited about this. Let's do it." So we, you know, I was thinking, okay, we're going to do this. You know, we can kind of move around and help different organizations. But Abby's like, "I want to do it every year." And so she's like the ambassador of Two Good Souls. And I'll also say that her public speaking skills have improved because Ms. Kathy gives Abby an opportunity to talk in front of people each year, and she writes a speech, and she practices it. And so it's really, it's really become part of her identity. And she loves the fact that she's helping kids, and she gets to talk about it with other people. And she even, last year at one of our events, Abby was talking about it and how much it means to her. And afterwards, one of our customers came up to Abby and said, "I want to donate. You inspired me. How do I donate? I want to give $2,000 and buy shoes in your honor." And Abby was so excited, like, she called Kathy, she's like, "I got more money coming in. We can buy more shoes." And so it really, her positivity and her desire to help became contagious in a good way. And it's, yeah, it's been fantastic in many ways. So really appreciate it.
One more person I want to thank. If you ever see Jacque Hakim in our community.
Yes.
We couldn't do it without him. We partnered with him. He gets us discounted amount of shoes, and I think how many, 500 pairs?
We need to get him on our team as well. Because I think he's on Wells' team, right?
No.
No.
Hakeem was on Wells' team.
I'm not sure. But anyway, but please thank him.
Does he have a permit going through?
Very instrumental in our community, as you all know. But we were able to buy more shoes because of him. And one more note, I want to just say to Lane, you know, it has been a pleasure and an honor watching Abby grow. It brings tears to my eyes, you know. She's 12 now. She was seven when she started, right? Seven. And the maturity, I feel like, I feel like part of their family. That's how they make you feel. You feel part of them. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you.
And Kathy, the greatest need for shoes, what were the sizes?
The big ones?
So we tried to get bigger sizes. We do have smaller, but it's mostly for the, you know, sizes eight and nine and up, because those are the kids that sometimes get forgotten about. We do plan on coming back in January with some of the social workers, and we'll have, we'll film and obviously invite Abby back. So you can order them sometime in January or February. We're working out those details. So thank you all.
10 years, congratulations to everybody who's been involved from its startup and wonderful work. That's all I have here.
Commissioner. All right, well, I just have to go for Gina to get back. It's okay. We can start with what I'm, I just handed everybody. She's going to put it up. But I'm doing a thing, stockings for seniors. So we are trying to service 115 seniors that are in the congregate dining through the county. So we are trying to bless them. And these are some of the items that we are trying to collect. So I have flyers. If anybody would like to help, we're going to have a box at our office. If you'd like to drop things off, that'd be great. So, and I have flyers if anybody wants one. Okay, next. I have a bunch, and I will be super quick, because it's been busy. Okay, so this was, I'll let Commissioner Starky, I'll skip this one. I'll let Commissioner Starky explain that. That's her baby. Okay, so we have partnered with One Stop Shop, and a special shout-out to Parks. One Stop Shop is in Dade City. So we have been able to bless this organization and give them a ton of resources for Dade City. I believe there's another slide. what their millage does because that was something that I think would be helpful for for everybody, at least, you know. So, okay, next slide. Okay, this is so much fun. Shout out to every single employee that dressed up for the seniors. Their costumes were amazing. I'm telling you, District 4, we are bringing it next year because I had no clue this was a thing. But the washer and the dryer and the hot dog vendor operation, all the staff really gets into it. The, the, everybody loved it. It's so much fun. So, shout out to Brian and Kathy and that entire team because this was, this was so fun. Okay, next one. And then, right after that, we went to the Vincent House for the chili cook-off. And they're about to put up a bunch of housing, which is really exciting. So, Gus got them the funding for that. So, that was, that was just such a fun day. So, next one.
Who won? Commissioner Yeager?
I don't know because I don't eat chili. This is the Gold Star Family Breakfast. This was absolutely beautiful. I have the information in my car, but if you'd like to buy a brick for it, it's $100 and it goes to-
What a pretty memorial.
-a great cause. It was absolutely beautiful. Next slide. Okay, this was the area of Asian Luncheon. And Brian was actually at another table and I I hijacked him and said, come sit by us. So, this was amazing and they raised a lot of money for a great cause. Okay. Oh, this was our, so we had, this is our second health fair with the Department of Health and Moffitt brought the the lung screening bus and Feeding Tampa Bay came. We fed 112 families. There were 20-something mammograms. People had immunizations and all, all sorts of things. So, this was amazing and I can't wait to do another one. So, there's that. This was the home dedication. They had seven homes they were dedicating. So, it was very, it was a beautiful, beautiful day. So, next slide. So, this was Paint the Night Blue for Pasco Kids First. There's not a picture here, but the artist who, he's very famous, has photos all over the world, but he was abused as a child and that's how he kind of got into art. It was very moving, very emotional. Okay, next one.
What's the location of that?
That was at the Greek Orthodox Church.
Damien Stuck.
Oh, Damien Stuck. Thank you.
Is he, he's local? Is he?
He is, but he's everywhere. Like, he's, he's everywhere, all over the country. Yep, Mar-a-Lago, TPO USA, all sorts of things.
Is he a Pasco resident? Just Tampa Bay, he is?
Yep. Yep. Okay. And then, this was, I did the welcome for the delegation. And that was great. And I think that's it. Is that it? I have one more thing. I'm just sending to texting Gina real quick. I just wanted to show you this lady. I I did the Veterans Day. Gina, I just sent you a text. I don't know if you just put it up on the screen, but I met this lady and she served three different branches. So, she was in the Army, the Air Force, and the Marines. And then, when she retired, she was a Philadelphia Police Officer. So, it was, it was a real honor to meet her. And she lives right here in Pasco County. So, I just wanted to, if you can't get it, Gina, it's no big deal. But she was just a super cool lady and I'd never met anybody that had served in three branches. She was very funny. She said, I tried going in the Navy, but they told me I was overweight. Also, I would have been in another branch. So-
All right, Commissioner Mariana?
All right, I got a few pictures. What do you want to bring up, Gina, go along? I was over at Saddle Brook Resort and all the discussion about the golf course, the changes they're gonna make, going from 36 to 27, how they're gonna make holes better. I'm gonna tell you, they delivered on the nine holes I played the other day. The designers like made some great changes. The condition of not only the Saddle Brook course itself, but even the one they haven't renovated yet in the Saddle Brook Back Nine, the greens are absolutely perfect.
Really?
Absolutely perfect. The pool has now been renovated where they got a brand-new shelters out there. They redressed everything. It looks good. The pool's been redone. Just a phenomenal, the amenities are are just incredible. So, what they've been doing to promise to bring forward, it's gonna be a great, great addition for the county and really elevating the resort up. Next page. So, watching Fox News the other day, you know, after just coming in, I'll, I'll talk to AM Skills, their training thing they had. There is such a shortage of workers.
Yeah.
And we've known this from in Tampa Bay, where there's like 3,200 jobs could have been filled just a while ago. This is the nation now. And they say, you know, listen to Jim Farley, from the president of CEO of Ford, talking about how people is, it's it's almost those other gentleman on it. They're saying for every five workers that are retired, there's only two replacing in the workforce. So, everything that I think we're doing at AM Skills is critical and we need to expand. And I'm gonna be working real hard with the Hudson Industrial Park up by Hicks Road and Hudson Ave to make sure we bring a giant building in there for heating, AC, plumbing, as well as all the AM Skills from manufacturing coming on. But look at the shortage that's going on right now. And I think, I think there's not gonna be an opportunity, Mike, to reach out to the car dealerships that are right here because they have such a shortage as well. And there's good-paying jobs that are out there. So, we need to kind of reach out and and jump into the market as well. And I think if we needed to, we could reach out to Ford and we could probably get them to join right with us to help us sponsor some of this. I think they would love it.
Yeah, they have a foundation.
They would, I think they would love it. And I plan to make that reach out, but I wanted to kind of just share with you what's going on there. All right, next. The Paint the Night Blue, what a, what a great event. You had the picture from the outside. That was the picture from the inside. You see the place is absolutely packed.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Just a phenomenal event. Pasco Kids First, they're one of our beneficiaries, the opioid money, et cetera, but doing a great job. And it's great to see the community support and they ran a really good, really good program. The AM Skills had the graduation. Mike, I had no idea. It was nine years we've been working with training on utility workers down there. And I'll tell you, one by one, he had a bunch of those people come up and talk about how it affected their lives. There was a dad there that was brought there after his son took the course. The dad was being changed out of a job. He's dead. You need to come down here and take the course. And they hit him spill his guts about how great it was to do it-
That's so awesome.
-and the encouragement he gave him. There was a couple of other ladies, a little bit older that were in there too, and then some young kids. One kid was in high school and he'd done one of the programs over the summer. And he says, I want to skip my senior year and go to work for utilities right now.
Oh.
And-
We won't let him.
So, they, they said, no, that's exactly right. So, the manager said, no, you're gonna go back to school. You're finished. And when you graduate, you come see me. When the kid's at his graduation, he actually calls the manager up and says, I graduated now. I want to come to work.
I love it.
He had a five-year plan and he executed every one of those plans. He wanted to get married, just high school sweetheart, wanted to have a home, wanted to have a car, wanted to have a boat. And I think there was one more thing in there. He met all his goals and is now, oh, and being promoted to a foreman at that time. So, really, just what they're doing is creating jobs, creating opportunities to make things happen. And I, and I just was so enthused to see it happen and how your team, Mike, was so enthused about, you know, making all this work to help their own force. Next one. And I was at the Gold Star Breakfast. And I want to talk about that Gold Star Breakfast, which you guys heard while you were there. So, I was sitting with Judy Kennedy, who's one of the big sponsors that was put up the money as well as a bench for her, her late husband, John F. Kennedy, at Veterans Memorial. Those monuments that, between Mike Wells and Jacque, absolutely phenomenal, weren't they?
Gorgeous.
I mean, it is just great. They gave little miniature replicas to the, to the families there. It was just such an awesome celebration. Tom Castriotta gave a great speech. And it was like two nights ago before that Judy and I were talking about, you know, how about, how about fundraising and trying to get the one for Wesley Chapel as well. I says, well, let's, we're on a golf tournament. And it was so funny. I hadn't even set the date or anything else up. And Judy comes out and added, as you heard, and says, yeah, and Jack Mariano's gonna run the golf tournament. So, I'm gonna run the golf tournament.
Love it.
And Mike, you may, I think we talked about this, maybe not. But I want to run it, when I do the scallop and seafood fest, I want to run it the Friday that we kick it off. So, it's gonna be 4th July weekend, perfect for Gold Star, perfect for tie-in.
Yeah.
So, we get everybody who's played in the golf, we'll bring them right over to that and just really kind of make this thing go for that big 250-year celebration that Park wants to do. And I think it's gonna be a, a great kickoff. So, we're gonna help hopefully have enough money to fund that next one by the, by the next time.
And you can buy a brick. I think that's pretty cool.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna buy a brick with my dad. So, yes.
Yeah, very cool.
All right, next one. That was a picture of just some of the outside stuff. The VA was there. They had some nice vehicles out there to kind of fire everybody up. Next. So, part of the reason I missed some of the stuff that you guys were doing, which was great for the community, my wife and I, we celebrated our 30th, 4th anniversary.
Look at that. See what's up there on the hill.
Yeah, the Acropolis up there, the Parthenon. I'll tell you, I, I tell you, the history of the world and starting, they say civilization's starting in that era. The stuff that I saw, I saw seven different trips, never mind kind of what we saw in Athens itself, was just amazing, very historical. And it's now got me reading back into like Ephesians, Colossians. And I got the Bible out and I was, my wife's watching the stories. I'm kind of reading along to see what like Paul went through, et cetera. Saw where he was kept prisoner. So, but the history there was just amazing and the, and the people there were crazy. And the food was great, too. So, she was a very deserving guy. I don't have a picture for her yet, but maybe in the afternoon break, I'll have it. But I wanted to take a picture. I was speaking at the, the Areapica Elks over in Hudson. Invited me to talk yesterday for the Veterans Day celebration. And I really wasn't sure how deep I was gonna go, what I was gonna get into to talk in. And when I walk in there, the first thing I see is all the landscaping grant that they used from the front, really dressed up the place fantastic. I mean, the place looks great.
It makes a difference.
It looks absolutely beautiful. And for an old industrial area, et cetera, just like makes it pop. So, I walk in there and don't I see the gentleman who's the driver for the Steps to Recovery Veterans Program?
Oh.
So, I see him there. We talked for a minute. He goes, you following me around? I said, I am. So, in we go. And little did I know, he's got like 20 to 30 of those veterans sitting in tables in the banquet room.
In Areapica?
The Areapica Elks is feeding them and honoring them on Veterans Day.
Oh, that's cool.
It was absolutely an awesome thing. It was so good for me to be able to talk about all the stuff we've done for veterans-
Yeah.
-going through it. I got a picture of it and I'll hopefully have it for the afternoon part. I didn't have the, I didn't take the picture. I was trying to get them before. But I tell you, what a great celebration Areapica Elks did. And after talking with them, and I've talked to Kathy about this, but we had a, the Steps, the Sun Coast Recovery Center, it's right down the street. One of their persons from Steps Recovery was there. And we may set a partnership with Steps to Recovery where they can do more treatment because there's only so much you can do with, with Steps right now. But the treatment facility is there. They like the bond. And plus, as Marilyn-
There's one up in Areapica, not the one on trouble peak?
So, well, the Sun Coast Recovery Center is right at, just above New York Avenue, below Denton. So, it's right on US 19. So, they're renovating now. They, they spent about a, one, about a million dollars renovating. They want to do one of the phases where actually do some housing. So, for these veterans that can't get into Steps to Recovery because there's not enough room, as Marilyn says, there's still more homeless vets out there, they're gonna be able to take some of them people in and give them treatment. And then the people down at the Steps to Recovery will be able to get more treatment as well up in this facility. So, I think it's gonna be a great partnership coming up. But it was just exciting to see everybody getting together.
Nice.
And that's all I got. Thank you.
All right. So, we'll, we'll break for lunch. And then we'll continue with the rest when we come back. Thank you.